Brandon doing some kind of technological wizardry. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open this meeting tonight. The Planning Commission is May 4th, 2020. Let's start with the rise in Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brandon, you ready for roll call?
Yes.
Okay, Chairman Parker.
Here.
Commissioner Woltius.
Here.
Commissioner Gatchell.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Journey.
Here.
Commissioner Corn.
Here.
And Commissioner Unger.
Here.
All right, so we have our new Commissioner Candace Unger. Do we want to ask any questions of her or just let everybody know she's here?
I was just gonna inform you that the City Council appointed Commissioner Unger at the last meeting or the meeting before that. And so she's been duly appointed. And at this time, I suppose if she would like to introduce herself and tell us anything about herself, Commissioner Unger now would be the time.
Okay, hi, nice to meet you all. Look forward to meeting you in person. My name, I go by Candy, Candy Unger, and I'm new to Sweet Home area. I work for Sweet Home Sanitation. That's what brought me here and I'm really excited to be a part of this community.
Excellent. Thanks for volunteering your time.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving forward, if there's any public comment in regards to anything that's not on our agenda for tonight, now would be the time to bring any of that up. If anybody has anything, I don't know if we have any other callers.
I don't have anybody or emails, so on my end.
Okay. So I guess we'll just get, oh, meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions on the meeting minutes from our last meeting? Be approved.
I have a comment on page three where there's a summary of Blair's little report. And it states that Walt, Walt's name was mentioned, but there's no last name and there's no identification of how he's affiliated with the Planning Commission. So just to clean that up.
Okay.
Just add that in.
Well, it's last name and...
Wendelowski.
I'll let you spell that.
Walt Wendelowski with Morgan CPS, the name of John Morgan's company.
Yeah, I'll make sure to go in and put that in there, so.
Perfect. Any other changes or alterations that need to be made to the minutes?
I have a question. I think the minutes are right. Although at the end Angela emailed us and said that we could not change wording, so does that need to be put back into the minutes or not?
Say that again?
The minutes that read what we wanted to change, but then we were told in a following email that that was not going to be because we had to comply with federal regulations for the size of the RV and...
Oh, okay. I thought you were saying that you can't change the minute.
No, I would just put that in the minutes is my question.
No, yes, well, it's not in the minute. Hold on. I don't have my, I don't have enough screens.
Oh, okay.
That would, that report, I mean, at the time during that meeting, we didn't know the answers to those questions.
Right, so it wouldn't necessarily...
And so it would go into the minutes for this meeting and that is officially reported.
So acknowledging that we received the email saying that we could not change that.
Yeah.
You want, you want that in this minutes that that was acknowledged, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can, and I can give you a, when we get to that point later on in the meeting, I can give an update on
where we are with it.
Your recommendation where we are with flood hazard regulations.
Okay. Sorry, I got a little confused. We were talking about minutes, so I got confused, so.
No, it's okay. All right. So other than those couple of changes, do we have any motions to approve the minutes from April 6?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Who seconded it? Was it Journey?
Eva.
Okay, so we have to do roll call vote. So Chairman Parker.
Aye.
Okay, Chairman Woltius.
Aye.
Commissioner Gatchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Journey.
Aye.
Commissioner Corn.
Aye.
And Commissioner Unger.
Aye.
So that's seven to zero and minutes passed with changes.
Excellent. So moving on to the next order of business, which is our public hearing. So gonna open the public hearing at 6:39. Sorry, I've gone, I don't know two pages here. So this is a public hearing for file ZMA 20-01. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of 8.72 acres, located at 4472 Highway 20, Sweet Home, Oregon, 97386. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from the commercial highway C2 zone to the residential high-density R2 zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive plan map designation. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing to make the recommendations to the City Council. City Council will hold a public hearing and make the decision on this application. So does anybody have any personal bias?
No. No.
Okay.
I have none.
Conflict of interest?
No.
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 Any ex parte information?
No.
No.
Chairman Parker, can I interrupt for one second?
Yes.
Can you please open the meeting with the time?
Aye.
I thought he did.
Oh, did he? Oh, sorry.
It's 6:39.
Okay, sorry, something's going on here with...
Yeah, we've got a little lag going back and forth.
Okay. Sorry about that, go ahead.
Nope, that's all right.
And also read the disclaimer.
I thought I read it, that's as well. I'm sorry Ava, but I don't see that.
Yeah, it's on your, it's on your agenda for the meeting.
Yeah, it's on the last page of the agenda.
Oh.
You know, the substantive criteria, da-da-da.
If you go to the first page there.
Yeah, double sided.
Persons interested in commenting on these issues.
Oh, sure.
So just that whole backside.
Okay. Persons interested in commenting on these issues should submit testimony in writing to the Community and Economic Development Department office located in City Hall prior to the hearing or attending the meeting and giving testimony verbally. Persons who wish to testify will be given the opportunity to do so by the Chair of the Commission at the Planning Commission meeting. Such testimony should address the zoning ordinance criteria which are applicable to this request. The Sweet Home Planning Commission welcomes your interest in these agenda items pursuant to Oregon statute 192-40. This agenda includes a list of the principal subjects anticipated to be considered at the meeting. However, the Commission may consider additional subjects as well. This meeting is open to the public and interested citizens are invited to attend. The failure of an issue to be raised in a hearing in person or by letter, failure to provide sufficient specificity to afford the decision maker the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal of the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue.
That's...
More than enough?
Yeah, it's not exactly, but it covers the same material.
Bring it up beforehand or keep your mouth closed. All right. Staff report.
You guys ready?
Yes.
All right, so this applicant is proposing to change the zoning map in an area consisting of 8.72 acres located at 4472 Highway 20 in Sweet Home, Oregon. The Sweet Home zoning map is proposed to change from commercial highway C2 zone to the residential high-density R2 zone. The proposed zone change would bring the zoning designation into conformity with the property's existing comprehensive map plan designation. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make a decision on this application. So any questions for, I think there was a map, you guys had a map up to take a look at it. And that shows the subject property area which is located there behind the old radiator supply shop. There's some apartments there. Any question for staff?
I have them.
All right, since there's no other questions for the staff, oh, sorry. Oh, it's just echo. Okay, sorry, I thought someone was trying to speak up. All right, at this time I'll open it up to our applicant, I believe, is it Bill that's on the phone with us?
It is, yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and give you the floor and just state your name and address and what you'd like to do.
Sure, Bill Lund, 6331 Lake Point Way, Sweet Home. So what we're, what we're doing is we acquired the property not too long ago in hopes of utilizing the R2 zone, which is high density. We are putting together, we're actually in two phases of engineering, I guess, we'll just do some due diligence on what our overall plan is. But the goal is to have about 60 to 80 units. And these are the homes that would be, I don't want to call them individual family homes, but they're, we're looking at a configuration of duplex to triplex, fourplex, but where there are zero lot line homes where they can be purchased individually. We've, you know, we're seeing, I'm sure you guys see that there's a huge need to have a lot more housing. But with, because of the market today, it's, you know, it's very affordable for younger families, retiring folks to be able to get into a home because of the interest rates. So part of the plan is to, I don't want to call it affordable housing because that sort of doesn't have a good stickamism, but housing that would be affordable. But also I want to say that, you know, what our design of these homes will look like, I don't know if you guys are aware, but you probably mostly, you guys mostly know, I'm sure, of Lake Point Estates up above the lake there. That's the subdivision that I put together and, and the unique homes that are designed and, you know, it's very, that's a very, I'm not sure how to put it, but it's just, it really complements, I think, this area here really well. So we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at the same type of designs for these type of homes and they'll have a lot of individualism to them. We are looking at, it will probably be a PUD, some sort of a planned development that will also have about, I'd say, minimum one acre of green open space and recreation area that we're gonna call it. We, one of the things we really want to put in there is actually a swimming pool. Just because we think that's a, for retired folks, young families, it's a, it's a great way to enjoy, you know, their home area. You know, it'll probably be phased in with that many units. There is some tricky areas to that property. There's probably only usable or buildable five and a half, maybe six acres there. Yeah, I think that's, that's the, you know, that's what I'm willing to kind of commit to and talking about right now. But, you know, again, we're, the reason why we're asking for the R2 zone is because we're able to demonstrate, you know, that property and it is a beautiful site. It has great mountain views and it's gonna make some great homes for people living in Sweet Home.
All right, thank you. So we've heard for our applicant. I don't see anybody in the audience and I don't know if anybody's on the phone to anybody that are opposed. Nobody, no public anyway, members of the public opposed to this that are present.
We're trying to make sure people are aware that if they have comments, they should either call this number that's on the screen, 541-367-5128, or email their comments to angela@sweethomeor.gov. And we will try to give some time during this meeting to hear those responses. But as of now, Angela, have you received anything by email? You're muted, so I...
Sorry, no, I have not.
All right, so, I mean, prior to closing, we'll come back and revisit if there's any, okay. We'll give people time to, any neutral parties in regards to this? People that aren't for or against? Again, we'll give a little bit of time to respond. All right, so not really any need at this point for asking for rebuttal since there's no opponents. So we're gonna close the public hearing for a little bit for discussion amongst Planning Commission. Closing the meeting at 6:50. All right, does anybody have any questions or concerns in regards to this application? I don't know if anybody doesn't have anything or just everybody's muted.
It is probably a good use for the property.
Yeah, and I believe it's the one that's, if I'm not mistaken, there's like the FERs apartments or something. And then right behind it is that wooded area.
I think it's a reasonable request.
I do too.
Yeah, I think that area is, is not opposed to multifamily apartment style duplex, whatever the case may be at that time, plus bringing it into compliance with, with our comprehensive plan. I mean, it's a step in the right direction. Do you have anything Lance?
I agree. I concur.
You concur. Excellent. So do we want to give it some more time as far as thoughts from the general public?
It's up to you. I, to be honest, I have a hard time seeing anybody have a problem with this. I don't think it's very controversial.
No.
And if it was, I think we would have already heard at least something.
Yeah, and judging by the land use around it.
Yeah, so it's up to you as to whether to hold it open for comments longer or not.
Can we proceed if we vote on it saying that we'll consider the motion passed unless something comes up in the next few business days as far as correspondence?
I'm not sure that's really possible because once you vote on it, you voted on it.
Right.
And then it goes on to the City Council.
Okay.
So, but on the other hand, that is, at least you have the security of knowing that if there are any comments in the next few days, we would be able to provide those to the City Council.
Correct.
After, after you voted on it. So there is at least that.
So basically we're sending our opinion to City Council, our recommendation.
And if you, I suppose if you wanted to, you could word your recommendation in that you recommend that it be approved or whatever, however you want to vote on it. But also essentially recommend to the City Council that they also pay attention to whatever comments are received before they get this.
Okay.
I, I, not like that would have much power in it, but it's at least, at least acknowledging the possibility that we get comments and acknowledging the awkward situation that we're in.
Okay.
I have a question. Mr. Lund said that it's, probably has five and a half to six acres that are buildable. That leaves us another three acres that is apparently not buildable. Why?
I believe there's some wetland issues.
I don't know the details on the site. If you would like to reopen the public hearing, you could ask, have Mr. Lund address those.
Sure, we can do that.
Directly. He probably would know best of all.
All right, so we're gonna reopen the public meeting, the public hearing at 6:54. Bill, you probably heard that, but we'd like you to maybe go into a little bit more detail why portions of the property are not buildable or usable for your intentions.
Sure. All right, you guys, do you see the map up there or does everybody have view of the map still, so I can kind of?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so if you see where 45th Street is, right next to the apartments and where it stops right there, right to the right of that, there is a, it's a creek, if you want to call it a creek. It's dry, you know, three, four months out of the year. And so then, then it starts out, I don't know if you guys have been back there, but it starts, it starts pretty shallow. It's not very deep, probably a two, three feet deep. Then it goes down into a ravine, literally. I mean, it's, it's probably 15 foot deep. And then, so there's a wannabe road and I think, actually the city put this in. I think this used to be, I heard, some sort of a road for the city. And I think it has to do with, because the main water line runs to that north, not all the way to the north edge of the property, but pretty much close right in there somewhere. So, so there's some, you know, culvert with, which is about, like I said, 12 to 15 feet down there. And so it's got, you know, it's got sloped sides. So that, that whole area takes up a good solid acre or more. And then, but then the north side of the property, it does fall off pretty dramatically on, you know, again, I probably could have drawn that up for you, but I would say, again, it's another, gosh, half acre to an acre. I, it's hard to, I'm getting, I'm getting the survey topo done on it right now, so I'll have better idea. But, and then there's this, if you look at 44th Street, if you will, you'll see that other cutout right there. It's not usable for anything. So, and that's another, you know, probably quarter acre right there. So that's why, that's why, you know, and then it does slope down right by the water plant right there on that northeast corner also pretty dramatically, which is not usable.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
But no wetlands, is that correct?
Is there any wetland on that or no?
No, believe it or not, there's actually no wetland. It's not in the, it's not in the inventory of wetlands. Not at all.
Excellent. Don't want to worry about that then. Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing back down for final discussion and voting amongst commissioners, 6:57. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to add based on what we've just heard from Mr. Lund?
I'm good.
Do you guys have anything, any issues or further questions?
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
Or ask.
All right, so moving forward, does anybody have any motions regarding?
I move to recommend that the City Council approve application ZMA 20-01, which includes adopting the findings and facts listed in the staff report.
We have a motion.
I second it.
I second.
I think we had two seconds there. Henry was one.
I think Greg beat me to it, it's okay.
Henry's bowing to Greg that Greg beat him.
Angela, you're muted. So that was a motion by Commissioner Corn and a second by Commissioner Stevens.
Okay, that's what I was verifying, yes. Okay. All right, so roll call vote. Chairman Parker.
Aye, in favor.
Commissioner Woltius.
Yes.
Commissioner Gatchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Journey.
Aye.
Commissioner Corn.
Aye.
Commissioner Unger.
Aye.
Okay, so motion passes, seven ayes to zero nays.
All right. Need to reopen or are we good to? All right. Well, I'll thank Mr. Lund if he's still on the line for his time.
Free, thank you.
All right. All right, so staff updates on planning projects, the code development.
Before I talk about the code update, I just wanted to report a little more on the flood hazard regulations that we talked about at the last meeting.
Thank you.
Those were discussed and voted on at the last council meeting. As was mentioned, we did try to get some information on the questions that you had regarding, primarily regarding the RV, the language when it came to RV.
Correct.
The information we got back was essentially that you do not have the ability to change the code, the model code because it would no longer be in conformance with the federal regulations. And so it wouldn't be sufficient when it comes to blood insurance program and FEMA regulations. So that's the way it is with that. There's, there's not really much we can do about it. Is there another question Angela on that, on those regulations besides the RV?
There was one about the definition of the truck. But the, we were told that's the same thing, that's a state thing and it has to be worded that way. So pretty much everything was, that's the way the state wants it worded, so.
So there was some, quite a bit of discussion at the council meeting about the ordinance. But they ultimately voted to approve it on the first reading. It does have two more readings, because that's the, to get an ordinance passed, you have to have it read three times unless it's an emergency. So it will be read again at the next council meeting a week from tomorrow. And then the following one, which will probably be first meeting in June. One, one thing I, that they, they were asking about the RV regulations as well. And one of the questions they had was whether it applied to occupied RVs only or unoccupied RVs. And it actually applies to both because the intent behind the ordinance is to keep debris from getting in the floodway. And so any, any RV, they're limited in the amount of time they can have an RV there. they can have an RV there. I think they said, the ordinance says 180 days out of the year is the only amount of time you can have an RV there. I don't know how they arrived at that, but that's what the FEMA regulations are. Because if an RV is, usually they're not tied down, or bolted down, or anything like that. And so, you have a flood event, it's swept into the floodway, it becomes a big dam and makes things a lot worse.
Understandable.
So, it does apply to all of those. Anyway, so, they approved it. They're likely to vote in favor of the other two times. So, the development code, I am starting to get draft chapters on that for our review, and it's going well so far. Some interesting things that have come up. I had, if I can find it. Now, one thing that Walt brought up, you know, we had a discussion about it, was some of the zones. We talked about the RMT zone, which is the residential industrial transition zone. And in our opinion, my opinion and his as well, is that it doesn't really make a lot of sense for it to continue in existence, because the intent behind that zone seems to be to transition residential areas to industrial. And the problem is, is those lots are just so small that they're not much use to anybody who wants to put in an industrial use.
Yeah.
And so, it really doesn't work very well. Not only that, industrial land is difficult to develop. There's not as much demand for it as there is residential land. So, one of the recommendations you're likely to see will be, essentially, to eliminate that zone and to have properties that are already zoned that way converted over to one of the other zones, probably residential, because that makes, kind of makes the most sense for those situations.
So, would they go, do you think, or does he have any recommendations as far as they would go to R1, R2, R3?
I think that it remains to be seen at this point. It certainly is a valid point of discussion and something that we'll have some options for you. I think one thing is to kind of take a look at the comprehensive plan and see what the original designation was for those. In many cases, those have a comprehensive plan designation, I believe, that is actually residential, R1.
Okay.
And so, it's kind of odd that it's in the way it is, which kind of brings up another point. Walt brought up that, you know, there's really a number of areas where the comprehensive plan does not match the current zoning, and we've discussed that in the past. And I think this would be a good opportunity to kind of fix some of those problems, because regardless of what we pass when it comes to overhauling the development code, there's most likely going to be some sort of amendment to the comprehensive plan needed. And so, this would be a good time to have, you know, a brand-new development code, and also say, oh, by the way, we're proposing these edits to the comprehensive plan designation, comprehensive plan map and document, so that everything kind of agrees with each other. And so, that'll be part of the discussion as well. One other thing we talked about, we talked about also the numbering of our residential zones. Ours are back...
My OCD kind of goes crazy when I...
R1 is low, R2 is high, and R3 is middle. And so, typically, R2 is middle and R3 is high, just because it makes sense that way. But, and so, we're gonna try to fix the numbering, which undoubtedly will lead to some confusion for a year or so while people get used to it.
Yeah.
But also, we have an R4 and a C3 zone, and those are each kind of a mixed-use zone. But we have them both, and so, it seems kind of silly. It might be better to have a true mixed-use zone where there are rules in place for having residential and commercial activity in the same zone, and how you would want to accomplish doing that. And we'll have some recommendations for that, too.
Would that be our apartment zoning, would be R4 or C3 is mixed-use? Or can we do that currently in, well, R2?
There's, I mean, there's several options. Right now, the current R2 zone is high density, right? And for most mixed-use zones, it typically is a higher-density residential mixed with commercial is the intent, where you have a main floor that is retail or something like that, and then there is apartments above it, or apartments next to it, or something like that. And so, I think there's lots of possibilities for that. One thing might be to look at the downtown zone and kind of look at what, how would we want it to look when it comes to residential above commercial areas?
I know that that trend in a lot of cities is coming back quite a bit, whether it's the shopkeeper, per se, that lives above the shop, or whether they have apartment spaces. And I know that a lot of Main Street and a few on Long Street have that built into them right now. I mean, I think currently their office space, but easily with the potential to go residential.
Yeah, and it's great, because a lot of times it means built-in customers for those shops in that area. They're right there, and people would rather just be close to home. So, there's still a lot of possibilities. One final thing I thought I'd mention, well, okay, two final things. We have a planned development overlay zone right now, where it's a special zone that falls over several other zones. And it means that you can have a planned development in those areas, which essentially gives the developer a lot of flexibility, where they can say, well, you know, we have this density standard, and I'm gonna apply it over my whole property, so that some areas are gonna be higher-density and some areas are gonna be lower-density, but they all work together in this big planned development that I've got. And there may be some other uses in there, possibly mixed uses, that would fit. You know, if you've got a big parcel of land, you know, it makes it so that you can have that kind of, here's a little retail center with some high-density housing over it, and then I'm gonna have some lower-density housing around it. It makes it kind of a nice development to live in. The planned development overlay zone makes it possible for developers to do that. What doesn't necessarily make sense is that we have a, that's only available in certain parts of the city, which I'm not sure why, but Walt's suggestion is to basically have a planned development section of our code that would apply in pretty much all zones. If you meet these criteria, you can do a planned development. There's not really a reason to restrict it to just the northern part of the city as opposed to the western part of the city.
If the property allows for it.
Right, and so, those are some changes that you'll be seeing as well.
So, that would allow a project to, say, have townhouses, single detached living, and, like you said, commercial shops with...
Perhaps, yeah. I mean, there's, again, these are just drafts at this point, but there's a lot of possibilities that way. And then, I think one thing that we'll need to discuss as we get further along here is what you would like to do with the recreation commercial zone. We talked a little bit about, I've been talking with Walt about that, about the original intent of that area and that zone. And one of the issues that we're seeing is that it's not well-understood, really, by anyone. Even the people who own the property don't seem to understand really what that zone does. And so, in my discussions with the owners of most of the property that's zoned recreation commercial, they have ideas of what they think they can do, and they actually can't do what they think they can. And they're worried about changing the zone. But also, any potential buyers of any of that property are concerned, because they don't know exactly what they can do with their property. So, if you, if we possibly can change it to more traditional, more traditional, you know, industrial, commercial, residential zones, it will make the property much more attractive to potential developers, and it will just make sense a bit more. Now, that's my opinion, and Walt happens to share it, but that doesn't, you know, we're the outsiders coming in, so that doesn't mean that's the opinion that should go forward. I just want to encourage you all to be thinking about those areas of the city, and what kind of zones you think are appropriate, because what's there right now, in my view, doesn't seem to be working, and there are significant reasons to try to change it to something that will.
So, at the bare minimum, clarification is required.
Right. And if we do make changes to that zone, that will definitely require some adjustments to the comprehensive plan, because the recreation commercial zone is in there. We will have to kind of determine what do we do with this kind of ugly stepchild that we've got here.
There have been some very detailed plans for some of those properties. Is the city aware? Is it still viable in the minds of developers, or has it completely lost momentum?
I wouldn't say it's completely lost momentum. I think it's warped. It's kind of changed in that now what we see is mostly residential when it comes to those areas, and when it comes to what's being proposed. There isn't, you know, some of the older plans had some recreation components, like golf courses, like a natural, what, a salmon museum and some other things like that, that fulfilled kind of the recreation commercial part, but then had residential mixed in with it. From what I'm seeing at this point, all the proposals seem to be strictly residential, and which is good, that's what we need. But it, a lot of it, the way I see it, you could zone it in more traditional zones, but then leave it open for a planned development.
Overlay.
And that would still work. We could have the code do that, and it would be much, it would make much more sense and be easier to work with.
There have been very detailed plan unit developments on that property in the past. And...
The last time I talked to the property owners, they were looking to, they wanted to get started with developing a certain number of properties that was kind of their first phase, would be strictly residential. And then, they were wanting this summer to submit a revised planned development for the Planning Commission to look at. So, and to my understanding, it's, again, mostly residential. So, they are already looking to change some of the things that have been approved in the past. And so far, it's looking to be mostly just residential, with a couple of minor things in there that a planned development could certainly handle. When it comes to the economic development side of things, that part of my position would highly recommend that we preserve industrial property along the railroad, or that it doesn't make sense to zone property that's right next to the railroad as anything but industrial.
Right.
Go light industrial if you want, but, and I'm not saying that you gotta let heavy stuff in there, but it doesn't make sense for it to be residential right next to the railroad.
True.
That's all I've got for updates on the code update at this point.
Hey, Angela, who's your office mate there?
You're muted.
You're muted. I can't read lips.
Angela, you're muted.
Angela, you're muted.
That's a funny story, though.
I'm sure it's hilarious.
I can't unmute her.
Angela, we can't hear what you just said.
Sorry, Brandon's...
I got the "oh shoot" at the end.
Brandon's muting me, because my coworkers are being a pain. So, this is Parker. I didn't know he was there till about, probably, three seconds ago, so, yes. One of my many furry coworkers.
That's Peter Parker, right?
Yes, it's Peter Parker.
Okay, so...
Just don't want them to be on payroll.
Parker, that's not a dig at you.
Yeah, no payroll. Not on your insurance. All right, does anybody have any other questions for staff in regards to anything planning-related? I guess I should preface that one.
Are there any, are there any applications pending?
Yes, so, we have a property line adjustment that we'll be going through. It got noticed for Liberty Rock area, which is between...
I saw the notification of that.
Yeah, so, that's an administrative decision, so that will go through. And then, the second phase of that is another property line adjustment, but the second one will need a variance, because of the western half of the property is in the significant wetland, and so, it's, it'll be in the May Planning Commission here, or the June Planning Commission hearing, because there's a portion of the land that's not buildable, but it counts toward their length-to-width ratio, so they've got to put a variance in for that one before that property line adjustment can be. And then, from there, there is a partition once those two get approved. So, there's four stages of the same area, and so, right now, those are what's pending, so.
And I know we hate the V-word here, the variance. We're not wild about getting those. This is one of the few circumstances where it actually makes sense that they could actually qualify under the language of the code, because they are dealing with a significant portion of their land that's not buildable.
Right, due to the wetland.
It doesn't make sense for that to be included.
Yeah.
It's got the riparian zone and the significant wetland of Wiley Creek, so it's kind of got a double whammy there of why you can't get close to it, so.
Wow. That'll be a fun one. All right. If nobody's got anything else, we'll adjourn our meeting at 7:19. Thank you all for coming. Candace, at some point, we look...